Okay.
Are you ready? Okay, we'll go ahead and call our special meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education to order. It is four o'clock. And if you'll stand, we'll say the pledge. We'll let the students lead us this evening, if that's okay with you guys.
In compliance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the record show that all board members are present in person this evening. And we'll begin with our local school improvement council presentation from Wayne Middle and Wayne High.
Okay, we just have to do this thing a little different than usual with us. And so I talked to Lori and Tiff, and we decided to do, present our information there's in hours together in Quiz Bowl format.
Sorry, my turn in the mic that way?
That's okay. So that's all the questions, not all the questions. So most of the questions relate to all the questions that you all had information about. And then Lori and I'll wrap things up at the end, okay? I'll hand it to you guys, did you turn your mics on? Okay, I want your mic on, okay.
Good evening, welcome to the 2024 LSIC Quiz Bowl competition between Wayne Middle and Wayne High School. I am Owen Queen, and I will be your host tonight. To begin, I'll introduce our teams. Representing Wayne Middle School is Ally DeWes, Cole McComas, John Justice, and Jackson Sattlers. Representing Wayne High School are freshman Eli Sailey and Trigyn Ritchie. And representing our senior class is Kiara McAllister and Haley Lester. We will begin tonight with a toss-up question to see which team begins. What does Boeing use to improve their M555?
It is.
Correct.
Mr. Alexander, I think we just write potatoes.
Potatoes. Can we get an explanation for that one?
It's the moisture in the potato helps absorb the radioactive waste.
All right.
This seventh grader recently became the first student at Wayne Middle School to hold a state data office. Who is this student and what is the office?
Uh, who is Kevin Atkins and what is vice president?
Correct.
Excellent.
What is the enrollment at Wayne High School?
Five hundred and twenty-four.
Correct. Approximately, what percentage of Wayne, of students at Wayne Middle School are considered chronically absent?
Twenty-seven percent.
Correct. Which Wayne County High School increased their math score on the SAT?
Wayne High School.
Which sports teams at Wayne High School advanced to the state tournaments this fall?
Um, Wayne High School volleyball, football, and track field.
Correct. Wayne Middle School teacher and faculty senate president Chase Atkins recently came up with an incentive program to reward students demonstrating excellence in attendance, academics, and attitude. What is the name of this program and what organization makes it possible?
The AAA program, it's the Louis Foundation.
Correct. What word is spelled incorrectly in every single dictionary?
Incorrectly.
Which Wayne Middle School staff member has been featured in the WBSSAC Wolves Clinic PowerPoint?
Tishman.
Yes.
Now, what was that question again?
Which Wayne Middle School staff member has been featured in the WBSSAC Wolves Clinic PowerPoint?
All right.
It was, it was weird to object to it.
How many county championships does the football team have?
Eleven.
Correct. How many internships does the Pioneer Career Launch support?
Twenty-four.
Correct. Name one of the two countries that allow you to take an act during work.
England.
Correct.
And we like that, don't we? We like that, yeah.
Yes.
What sports team has two recent back-to-back county championships? How many times have the Pittsburgh Steelers defeated the Cleveland Browns?
Eighty-two.
Yes. Specifically, the record is eighty-two, sixty-four, one.
What the, what would be the relevance of that question?
I don't know.
Well, granted, students, Mr. Alexander.
How many state data winners has Wayne Middle School won since 2022?
Two-seventy.
Yes. What behavior program rewards students for good attendance, good grades, and good behavior?
Pioneer Pride Program.
Correct.
I would like to call something after the buzzer before the question is open.
Correct.
I, I have seen your buzzer lined up before he finishes.
Ninety percent of the children sitting up here are sore losers.
How, who has more tattoos, Mr. Atkins or Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Atkins.
Yes. How many phone calls has Shakira, the social worker at Wayne High School, made to parents regarding attendance?
Eighty, uh, eighty-two.
Yes. Which Mr. Brooks is better?
Mr. Brooks is better.
In the U.S., someone steals this every twelve seconds at a Holiday Inn.
It's out.
Yeah. Who is the most popular person in the cafeteria?
Atch. I'm lucky.
What happens around eight fifteen each Wednesday morning in Mrs. Stapleton's office?
Our social worker Shakira, our community and school partner Robin, and Mrs. Stapleton made with students and her parents regarding attendance.
Yes. What always comes but never arrives?
More.
Yes. What is the only continent without a McDonald's?
Africa.
Yes. Which student scored a, scored a thirteen-ten on her SAT? Yes.
Say that again?
Thirteen-ten.
And the answer was?
Ellie Billie.
All right.
Who is the best pickleball player at Wayne Middle School?
Wayne High School girls' basketball coach, Lloyd Wilson.
Which high, or which school has the principal that is eagerly waiting June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five?
Wayne High School.
I don't know why. I think our singing part.
What percentage of Wayne Middle School students scored distinguished in the eighth grade math on the twenty-three, twenty-four GSA? Which, what group of Wayne Middle School students has, has shown the most growth on recent star benchmark testing? What is Mr. Alexander's favorite football team?
Steelers, Vikings, Chiefs, Republicans, Cowboys, but it's the Browns.
Yeah, he got to it.
Which Wayne High School student scored a thirty on their ACT?
Owen Queen.
Yeah. What nineteen ninety-five animated movie did Woody say, "There's a snake in my boot"?
Toy Story.
It's me.
Toy Story.
What country uses approximately four billion miles of toilet paper each year?
China.
Yes. And our last question, in one of the most popular Dr. Seuss books, what won Sam I Am in?
An African.
Yes.
So close.
The winner?
Winner? Wayne Middle School.
Middle School's the winner. On behalf of Wayne High School and Wayne Middle School, I would like to thank you for your participation and attendance, attention tonight. Now for a few words from our sponsors.
Good job, Owen.
A big round of applause for the kids, that works hard. On top of Miss Stapleton's nice red folder is the Wayne Middle School LSIC, LSIC sheet. And you have our statistical information. Um, enrollment three forty-five, we have eighty-three students with IATs and sixteen with five oh fours. And that translates to twenty-nine and a half percent of our students with some kind of accommodation. And that would be twenty-nine and a half percent of our students that test with accommodations. And you see our GSA test scores, super valid in eighth grade math. As our kids at home, have you had distinguished in eighth grade math last year, Cole?
Eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent, so that's kids that were above and beyond this mastery, they were distinguished in math. That's a big number for us, we're proud of that. Um, all students are instructed on grade level standards. And we use grade level appropriate text. We're addressing our chronic absenteeism with our communities and schools and social worker. The Lewis Foundation provides a lot of funding to help us do attendance incentives. And we work very, very hard not to suspend kids and remove them from the school environment because we can't correct problems if they're not at school and we can't help them, give them the supports we need. And we do have a wish list since it's Christmas, dear Santa. Santa, we need a sheltered area for our kids to wait on the buses at the end of the day, and that's something we can share with Wayne High School because we have buses from what, two fifty until what, three fifteen? So we have a lot of kids waiting. Um, additional marqueson and an interventionist. We definitely miss having intervention in middle school because we do have a lot of kids that need intervention. But do you have any questions for Tishra or for our four kids here? And actually, all the kids that are over on the high school side are kids from Wayne Middle School too, we're proud of all of them. You guys got anything to ask?
No.
All right, that's it for us.
Any questions? Lori, I heard him say that your chronic absence is currently at twenty-seven percent. That, do you know where you were at the end of last year?
Right around twenty-seven percent. It's lower than the county average, I do know our school absentee is probably, it can be as low as county average.
Okay, I think twenty-seven percent, if I remember correctly, is about where the state was last year. And of course, we're trying to get to that state number, so that's, that's a pretty good number. Okay, thank you.
All right, um, our, in the red folder is my, is Wayne High School's information. Um, our enrollment is, well, it's now five twenty, I just found out that changed from the time I typed this. Um, we do have one hundred and twenty-six students identified for IATs and twenty identified for five oh fours. So out of that five twenty-four that I'm showing there, it was actually five twenty, one hundred and forty-six of our students received accommodations. And that's, that's huge when it comes to all the testing and so.
I think that enrollment number was down, what, about forty, forty-five from last year?
Yes, it is, it's down from last year. Um, I've been here, um, well, I started teaching here in ninety-five, and I graduated in eighty-five, and I have never seen such a level of enrollment ever. When I was a student in the eighties, we were almost triple eight, we had almost a thousand kids. And it's just continuously decreased since I've been here, even on staff, I've never seen numbers that low before. The testing is the next thing, and our scores did decrease in reading on the SAT last year. But at the percentage, it was lower than the county percentage, overall county percentage, and lower than the state percentage in the decrease. Um, we decreased in the reading and language by ten percent, whereas the state, um, it would decrease by eleven. Um, and our math scores, the state as well as the county overall had a, showed a decrease. We had a minimal increase, but we'll take that and one percent increase in math on the SAT. The third sheet in your folder is the, um, I think it is the other third one, is the, um, reading levels. Um, we're not, not all of our seniors have tested yet, um, they'll be tested by the end of this week. It is hard to test our seniors because we've got them going to Mount West, and we've got them at Marshall, and things like that. But anyway, from the fall to winter benchmarks, there is an increase, um, in almost every grade level. Uh, the seniors, the twelve grade, I expect that to be an increase, that's just who is tested at this point in time. That's with the star benchmark. Our attendance, which I am going to call Terry Lane about this today because I've never seen this before. Our seniors have better attendance than our freshmen. And I've never seen that before, have you, Mr. Miller?
You have.
Have seniors, have seniors have better attendance than freshmen? So that is correct, Terry Lane did the report too. Um, so, um, there's the average daily attendance, so the total, when you add all four of those up, our total average attendance is ninety, ninety point two, twenty-nine percent. Um, and you can see there that our freshman class is our worst, and I talked to Lori today, and she said that was the problem last year, that the, that class, that eighth grade class last year was, had a large chronically absent percentage. Um, and to the point of what are we doing about it, one of the questions, um, Shakira, our, our, uh, social worker, and Robin and I have Wednesday morning meetings in which we have, um, parents come in, we talk to the kids. Um, we had one dad that came in mad because he'd received the attendance letters, and he was tired of the phone calls because he knew his kid was here, but to come to find out, his kid was skipping. And, um, so anybody, when he figured that out by pulling his driver, we didn't pull the driver's license, his dad did, and miraculously, that child's attendance has progressively gone up. So those meetings, um, he came in mad because he thought school chief was wrong, and so we're having those meetings. Shakira, I think, um, one of the questions was she's made over eighty-two phone calls to parents, she's documented. And, um, we have meetings every Wednesday morning, sometimes those last five minutes, sometimes we're in there for over an hour. Um, but those meetings are making a difference. The next thing, one of the questions was our Pioneer Pride Reward Program, um, I kind of explained it there, I won't read it all to you. But our students are rewarded in each grading period for attendance, grades, and behavior. And the first six weeks, we awarded three hundred and fifteen cards, and the second six weeks, we awarded two hundred and eighty-nine cards. So with our attendance hanging out around five hundred and twenty, over half of our students are being rewarded, um, for good grades, good behavior, and good academics, I mean, attendance. And, uh, I wanted to mention our career launch, our, uh, internship program. We have fifty-two students that are actively, uh, reporting on internships. The list of businesses that support our students and our school are listed there. And, uh, kind of included that because when we talk about some of our needs, um, that some of our requests, one of the things that Ms. Boot and I have talked about is our business sponsors, um, and she can maybe speak a little bit more on that too. We feel like we need to turn and support them a little bit, they're doing a whole lot for us because some of them are paying our kids to work. And giving them some, um, advertisement would help, giving them some kind of club, either on the radio or in programs, t-shirts, things like that. Um, and we just don't have the money here at the school level to do that, if, um, who knows, we need to do that, so.
Um, that pretty much sums, sums it up. When we first started, we did have a, a little bit of money that we used, um, to advertise during basketball season, volleyball season on the scoreboard. And then, of course, it doesn't cost anything to ask Brian to plug our businesses at the, uh, football games, um, during halftime, and everybody has graciously done that. But not only are our businesses paying taxes in our community, they're also paying our students as well. And we need to find a way that we can support them at the same time, supporting different things here, uh, within the school system. Such as, we can put ads in the yearbook for our businesses, but the yearbook can't afford to do that for free. So we need to have some way to comp, to compensate that. Um, same thing with, um, just making sure that some of these businesses are small businesses, some of them are larger, but they know that they're appreciated for their investment in our students.
And there's a few other things that we, that are on our needs and requests. Um, the term department informed me that the roof on the white room is leaking, um, and it's apparently, all the roof is needed. So that would be just a simple work order that we would put in. And as a result, the ceiling in the white rooms would need to be repaired. Um, they secured some funding, um, and they would like to put a floor in with that funding, they just need, but they can, they can't afford to do the roof and the ceiling. Um, and the other thing, we have a drama club, and three of these young people are in our play, which we're doing Thursday morning at nine o'clock, you're more than welcome to attend that. We did not charge the elementary students, uh, they, White Elementary and Eastland Elementary are coming, bringing their younger K through three to see the play on, on Thursday morning, so you're more than welcome, if you don't have anything else to do, come out and see it. Uh, but these three will be in it also. Uh, but we don't have any place to store anything, is the problem. And so, um, securing an outfielding or some, some form of storage period where they can store props and so forth, um, so that we don't have to make those year after year play after play. And probably the most simplest one is our parking lot out front of our teachers and visitors park, there's no lines, we have no lines at all. And so they need to make big lines, I know that will probably be a spring, summer project, but, um, that, that buses are parked pretty well, but the additional parking is not. Um, and I just want to reiterate, and I'll close with this, I want to reiterate the ACT and SAT scores that we use in this. Um, Owen has a thirty, um, on his ACT, the average is nineteen to twenty.
All right.
Her perfect score is thirty-six, so he, um, he, he was really shooting for that, I mean, he did very well. Eleonna Billie was not with us tonight, but she scored a thirteen-ten on her SAT, just for relevance, her perfect score is sixteen hundred, and the average score is ten fifty, and she scored a thirteen-ten, so we want to make sure we mention that behind, so. Any questions?
The, Christie, um, tell me about, um, is it the, the manufacturing place up at Marshall, the former Robert C. Byrd? How, how's that internship working with our welding program?
So, uh, we have partnered with them, and, um, students had to fill out an application in order to participate, and their parents had to sign off, so not, although Mr. Michael sent applications with all of the students, and he wants one hundred percent, um, participation, we do not have one hundred percent participation right now. In return for that, they are going to give those students who did return their applications hours towards apprenticeships that will stay with them past graduation. So, say we have a student who decides that they want to work out at the Union Hall, and they do that for a year, but then they decide they want to go and they want to get their degree and go and do an apprenticeship through, uh, Marshall and fast manufacturing. Those hours that they earn through, if they worked at the internship and through Mr. Michael's class, will be on their transcript and push them ahead.
Okay. Very good, very good. And how's the, uh, how's the medics program?
And how's the, uh, how's the medics program progressing?
The medics program is progressing great, and they're doing their clinicals now on Wednesdays. Um, the kids love it, the hospital has said that, um, our students are doing a great job, they're glad to have them. So we're right on schedule as far as that goes. We have talked to all of the tenth grade, um, English classes to let them know that after break, we will be, um, taking applications. Um, the hospital has agreed to open up fifteen more spots for us and fifteen more spots for Capital Midland. And, uh, we had over thirty students express interest in, um, being part of the program. So, so far, that, that's doing great. Also, I want to mention, I've got a meeting with, um, Level One Bascers, they want to take several interns. And, uh, they want to start that as soon as the semester starts again. So that's another business that's kept going.
Christie, were you able to get ahold of, uh?
I had told you, I thought I, I thought I was still working on it.
He was interested, he said there were several things, especially like mechanical and things like that, that he was really interested in setting up a partnership with.
I'll make sure you get that.
Any other questions?
Thank you guys very much, great information, and it sounds like you all are doing wonderful jobs, so keep up the good work, and we appreciate, appreciate everything, so, thank you.
Well, I think what I'm really thinking is, say, maybe, you know.
All right, I think we're kind of, uh, right on schedule here, is there anything you want us to take a look at or anything other than what's on your wish list?
Yeah.
Of course, we know, but I would like to make a tour through the middle school, I haven't seen, um, the final product since we've finished up, so.
Okay, we can do this.
All right, you have one of these or?
Yep.
Sounds good. All right, let us wrap this up, and then we will take off. So we'll take, um, I guess our facility will be after a meeting.
No reports, we've got a meeting Thursday night, so we'll just, I'll fill you in there.
Motion by John Heda, second?
I'll see.
Yennis, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, four twenty-six, and we'll take our facility with you.
Okay, folks, online, thanks for joining us, that concludes our, uh, meeting for this evening. Yes, we came.